And Jay, I'm just gonna take them upstairs and move them to the building. There's a room or nothing down. They don't need to go on.
So. Do you remember?
The people did. I mean, whatever that is going on.
Now, the following order. As always.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. We will start with the canvas, and we have Amanda's gonna sit around for Heather. Heather is here by zero. She's not much of a reach of time.
Okay, so the first group I have is a group of mothers who moved within the precincts. They have completed their cards and taken care of everything they need to. So they have moved within the precinct. And. Within the precinct. And they are registered, so they were registered to that precinct. So these.
So they're good.
Yes.
Right, okay.
Okay. This entire group's name changes. They've just changed their last name. They have completed their paperwork and they're. Okay.
I guess.
Yes. Okay, these people have moved within the state to Osage County. Okay? So that's over on the second page. Um. So this person, this group of people right here, they have moved over a year ago. Okay?
Okay. So there it goes.
Right. Okay, these people moved from Shawnee County to Osage County. And they did it within the last six months. I broke them down this way, just to make, if it made a difference to you. Summer in June, one is actually October 7th. So 31 days before the election, this person moved to Osage County. Okay, and then this is June. June, August. And this one is October 15th of 2022. So that was within 30 days.
Well, where did they vote at?
They voted at their new precinct.
So it says, registered voter, moved into my state within 30 days of election, and voted at former precinct as a leader. So if it's a new precinct, they would be now.
Okay, so those are all myths. Okay, this is. This, I don't know how to take this one, because I, it's just totally different. This person was registered in Sedgway County. They said that they moved to Osage County, but they said they moved here on December 15th of 2022. So they moved here a month and a half before the election. So I would say, I mean, they may have meant 21, but they definitely wrote 1215 to 22. So they said they moved here in November or December, and it's.
Which is not.
Hasn't happened. So I would say we can't accept that.
No.
Okay, and these are all moved to Osage County from another county, no date given. So we don't.
All good.
All right, these are all clerical errors. They, there may be like a spelling in the name that was just wrong. They went to the proper polling place, but they couldn't find it in the book, and we did. I mean, there's just multiple reasons, but these are all clerical errors on our part.
So they're all good.
Or the part of the collection board, yes. Okay, um. Let's see, there's. We'll get to these, they're gonna take a little bit of time. The signatures do not match on this one. We can, we've tried, we've been aging them to take that into account, but it is just a completely different signature.
So it's.
So, right. And these, there's no information, we can't verify anything. We can't tell, you know, they said they did not receive their ballot by mail, as in the book listed advance, but we can't prove they voted or didn't vote, because we don't have a name.
Okay.
So there's just no way.
No.
Um. Okay, this voter was registered, that they should have voted in Ward 2 and went to Ward 3. And this person was registered in the correct precinct. They should have voted in Grant, but they voted in Ward 3. And this person was in Grant, and they should have went to Ward 3.
Now, all of those are in the same hole.
Right. So why they didn't send them to the correct place, I do not know. And why they didn't call us to find out where the correct place was when they could not find them, I do not know. Because we definitely tell them that as part of our training.
Well, some people are gonna vote where they want to, but.
Okay.
You're going to try to.
I mean, some, well, a lot of these say that they moved within the county, it's a yes, but that's not saying they moved.
Yes, yeah.
So where does that one fall under?
Because this one, they moved there in six of 19, and this one, they moved there in June of 19. So, and then this one has no date for residents established. Um.
Well, that'd be number six, I guess voter was registered, but voted in the wrong precinct. So within the county.
So it's.
Due to error or insistence by voter. Or no sense of insistence.
So I was looking down. All right, then this one, weren't able to verify. Okay, this one, it was registered in Ward 3, but weren't able to verify where they voted or anything, because there's no name or nothing.
That's a no.
No.
Then these are statewide, these people were not registered in Osage County. So what we do is we try to find them in the state of Kansas, and if we can't find them anywhere, then we just say they're not registered, or they're a new registrant. And so none of these people were registered anywhere in the state that we could find.
Okay.
So they just were not registered.
So that's a no.
Okay, and this person. Is correct in the system as far as the right address, but he went to the incorrect polling place.
Okay, so that's a yes.
And this person, we were, we were able to verify that they had asked for an advance ballot. He said he never mailed it, and he came in to vote, and we could verify he not with advance.
That's a yes.
These people have moved within the county, but this one has no registration. I don't know how to verify where they were or where they're going. So.
There are no registrations.
So that's not a registered voter?
No.
They were registered, but I have no way knowing where they moved. Because there's not a card on the back. If you flip it over today, there's no card.
So that's a no.
Yeah.
Okay, these are moved within the county from one precinct to another, okay? And this one, they said they moved August 1st of 2020. And they apparently moved from one side of Burlingame to another side of Burlingame. And they voted. In their correct precinct.
So there it is.
A two yes.
Okay, this one moved within Osage City, 9/1 of 22, and they voted in their correct precinct.
So that's all, somebody else?
Um, this person voted, uh, they moved in April, and they voted in their correct precinct.
Not really else.
And this person voted, they voted in the correct precinct, why did I just start off with that? But they moved on 11/8 of 22.
Well, say that again.
So they moved, well, that's Election Day. I think they just put today, they.
Right.
Yeah.
So they're okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, this one moved from one ward to the other ward, but I don't know a date.
Oh, that's still fine.
And this one, they moved from one location in the county to another location in the county four years ago.
Okay.
And they voted in their correct precinct. This person voted in their correct precinct, and they had moved to 1 of 21. And this person, I don't know the date, but they moved from one precinct to another precinct. This one was.
From one precinct to another precinct, so all of those are up there.
Okay, and this one, the same story, moved with, moved from one precinct to another on July 1 of 2022. Moved within the county on 8/1 of 2020.
Were you on the right ones?
Yes.
Okay.
This one voted in the right place, moved within the county, I don't know a date. Change of address from one town to another town in the county. They said it happened on 9/1 of 22, and they voted in their new location. This person voted in their new location, geez, yes. They moved in their new location, I don't know a date, they moved within the county.
So, okay.
Moved from one precinct to another precinct in the county. Voted in their correct precinct, and I don't have a date. Moved within the county, voted in the correct precinct, no date. Moved within the county, voted in the correct precinct, 8/24/22. Moved within the county, voted in the correct precinct, do not know a date. Moved within the, this is the spouse, the spouse, all right, I assume they're, they're in the same place, and they did the same moves. Basically, they did it 8/29 of 22. Moved within the county.
They were in different towns, I don't refer to them.
Yeah.
That's true. And this one is 7/7 of 22, they moved from the county, voted in the correct precinct. This one voted, and they changed location, they voted in the correct precinct, actually, they voted advance. And we got them in the right precincts. That would be the same with this one. And this one. This one. Um. This one. And the, these, okay, those were voted in the correct precinct. This one was.
All right.
Yes, this one moved from one precinct to the other on 10/18 of 22. And they. They voted in their old precinct.
What day was that?
Uh, 10/18 of 22, so that was within 30 days of their life. Um, moved within the city of, one of the cities, did it in March of. This year, and voted in the correct precinct. Um, and this person moved. From agency to help, let's make sure that's. Correct, yes, okay. Sorry, I just need to verify the address.
So this was okay?
And that's, yes, and that is all. So you guys want to spin the notes back down to me? And then open the essence?
We got this one?
I watched.
Oh, yeah.
And all stay together.
Okay. And upstairs, we have the. Upstairs, we have the ballots that came in after the election, but were postmarked Election Day, and came in within the day, but we have to respect our state office and the U.S. Congress, and then it's going to be handed when we get them out. Actually, if you put the ballots in separate. Oh, you.
I would do it.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
And then down the government.
Right.
Yes.
I told her.
That's fine, hey, it's on video. I got her too, I think I would.
And then if you just leave the card at the back, we're all going. We don't want those little buttons up, so we're ready.
That's nice.
24, 25. 27.
27.
So 51, 68.
And. 40. 41. Okay.
68.
So I will take these upstairs.
So you want them. Emote.
I will emote the ones that, rather than the. If I didn't. Then I will take them upstairs and let them start working on them. I will get busy and tell her that they're here for the hands of.
It'll happen, it's a matter of your promise, so you can't do that.
Well, I know, but since he's here, can you take him early? Or do you have other people coming?
We have Ryan, he's gonna be here. And I'll get to that third.
All right.
We have other stuff to do.
I've got some busy stuff that I can come down and give you.
Yeah, I'll see that.
I will take these up then and be right back. Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Do we need Amanda or anything else on the canvas? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day, thanks for your help.
Yeah, I'll see you.
You realize you get. And you realize it started in that one.
Oh, they had to, because the canvas, it usually takes a long one. That was pretty quick, wasn't it?
Yeah.
We never know how long it's gonna be, because we never see it, I won't bring it down. The last time it was a couple hours.
Yeah.
Was that a direction to run to, to have the handbaker at 9:45?
That's what's on the agenda for.
All right, I can come back in a little bit.
That's what time my show on here is at 9:45. I mean, as long, when Ryan, so Ryan comes at 9:30.
Yeah.
Would be a dinner, I don't know if I ended that problem. We got a bunch of minutes out there, so if you don't have those over.
I'm just running.
Some people want some to go.
I heard the lights in town look pretty good here.
Uh, I haven't been there really enough to check. On the green list.
Whatever they got.
Yeah.
Whatever they put up.
Yeah, we'll kill. Look, it's a good session.
Hmm.
You have your stuff? Uh, we're a little long. You have copies, and you got copies for us? Would you do that? So we just didn't have any? Just a couple copies?
Jay. Is that the special event application that you're talking about?
Yes.
Is that what?
Well, I was looking, I was looking through my emails. Okay, I, okay, I've got that.
On that, so I gotta walk over there.
Yeah.
Are you ready for the other busy stuff?
Sure.
Okay, so the Linden Pride Hall, and they would like to place the Christmas tree out here, and they plug it into our electricity, and it will be on a timer for six hours. It comes on in the evening, and they would like to have that here from December 3rd through January 1st. And then they would also like permission on January 3rd for about half an hour at dusk. They're going to have an official lighting of the tree, and they are gonna serve cocoa and cookies. And they would like permission to do that.
What day is it now?
December 3rd, it's a Saturday, it's the day of the Linden Christmas.
I don't know.
No.
Now you got a problem, bud? So I'm making a motion with that.
Okay.
I'll have to do it.
Well, I think it would be a good idea.
All right, so I'm making a motion with, let them put the Christmas tree on.
Second.
All those clerics, aye?
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry. Most cheers.
All right, then I have a rude closing, and I will send you down the information on it. I did call Christine Cropper to make sure that the township was aware. There wasn't a problem. She said they were aware. I set the hearing on it for December 12th, because I've missed the deadline for this week to get something in the paper. So it will be next week that it goes in the newspaper. So it will be December 12th at 9:30 for the hearing.
And where is the hearing, it's here?
Yes, in front of you. And there should be, there is a map, okay?
Yeah, okay. Okay. Yeah, my bar plate.
Is this one that closed with, where they put the new road?
No.
This is done.
They put the road was basically right in. And here's coming around.
So do you want this back? The tablet?
Um, yes, that's fine. I, and I can sign my publication. If you approve the whole thing on that date, I'll sign my publication.
So that's what I'm making a motion with, approve having a hearing for the road possible or closure on December 12th, was it set by time?
Nine thirty AM.
At nine thirty.
Second.
All those affairs at high.
Hi.
Hi.
All of those things on motion carries.
And that's all I have. I had something in the box to remind me and bring it downstairs. I need to take it Stephanie.
Heather, you got your cell phone with you?
Yes.
Can you take a call if you get a call?
Yes.
Okay.
Use, yeah, except, except I have one thing. Use my. Well, do you want me to call you? My, don't use my county number. You're gonna have to use my other number and I don't know if you have that.
Although, I mean, I don't know, but I just thought if you wanted to know what we saw, give around a quick executive session, but. It's not that important if you want to be on, I'd call you. Did you grab that? Yes, please.
No, no, I need you, but it's just.
The original agreement is on the letter back. It's on the top there.
Like you showed up, maybe you do. So I'm gonna make a motion to meet an executive session with Ryan Fong or. Public Works Director to discuss a matter of confidential data about financial barriers, trade secrets, corporations, trust, individual partnerships. Also with Melissa, why we keep on calling Melissa second? Melissa. I ran it off for a period of fifteen minutes. Um, then we'll return to the rest of the.
And are you saying it's nine oh three?
Nine oh three is mine. I got nine oh fours.
Okay, let's go with nine oh four.
Second.
All those birds are high.
Hi.
Your office is calling you in.
Big morning. I just wanna make sure that Heather, I'm not gonna hear. I don't know how she reads on this. I'll just listen and not worry. Okay.
One minute.
What is, I'm actually checking from the executive session. Mr. Fine, come on up. Are you good?
I'm fine.
You fine?
I'm fine. Fine is fine.
Oh, so when you start digging in there, then you got lots of stuff.
Mm-hmm. Okay, you know.
You want to enter or what?
No. Put this one back in there, actually. I'll do a next step. Remember last week when I had the solid waste authority and we had us sign for that budget thing? Right as soon as I sent it back to her, she sent me a more detailed spread of what they had going on. And she was like, well, could you go back and have this one signed? And I said, that'd be no problem.
Yeah.
And it spells it out. All the figures are exact same.
Right.
But it's set up a little bit better where you can sign it. This is from Shay at Lake Region.
For all the sense of argument, we should do that again.
I think you could probably just sign it. You've already approved it and sign off on what you thought you were doing.
Yeah. It was like, we sent the emails right at the same time. I sent the sign one and she sent this.
I will copy it though, if that's okay.
Yes.
What is the number first?
Yes.
Yeah. It was nice enough to have a voice on, but now.
Pardon me?
Yeah. Now I'm starting on a horse with a very big bell. Three days a week. Yes, sir.
These are contracts, most for the bridge and bridges. Those are that.
So, certainly it's part of the repair.
Yes, this is all, all the, all the bond that they have. That's fine.
There's a, I think it's on about six months. It just says a traveler's casualty, surely kind of American gave the authority to date the bonds are.
Right, okay.
To wrong or right. It is, this is.
Yeah. That's gonna be the same thing for the other bridge that you just looked at. That's their bond for that one, so. These two bridges are. This will be for two of the bridges that were awarded.
Two so far.
Yeah, we don't have the whole miners' check, so.
So you need.
There should be, here's.
Four notes on each?
I think so.
You need how many signed copies?
Each of them had to be signed because we keep one, Cook Flat keeps one, and Mel keep one.
Okay. Well, it's fine. You made a motion to sign those. So I made a motion, we signed the contract books for the bridges that were approved. Uh, so the last one, you know, a couple weeks ago.
Yeah.
Two weeks ago.
And this is the one with.
Give me those bridge numbers.
Um, it's bridge number 134 and bridge number 125.
And the contractor on that is Wild?
Wildcat.
The Wildcat. Or, or is it the?
Are both of these Wildcat? So the other kind is all okay. So we're contracts the law. Which were approved and checked over by CFS two weeks ago.
And did you say, Ryan, that these have been viewed by Josh already?
Yes, this was when we all went over the.
Yeah, this, they've been worked out by the CFS, Cook Flat's government, they've been through contact and make sure everything's approved. Will they provide matches?
Okay. If we need copies of whatever. You made a motion.
So I made the motion with Bridge 125, 134, Fred Sagino, all those in favor say aye.
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 All put the same sign.
Well, thanks, Ryan.
Motion, yes. It's a lot of sign.
Oh, cool.
This one's mine, which way?
What's that? You're going to add one more?
I'll have to back to Ron before.
Rhonda, can you use my stamp or do I need to physically sign those?
Do they have a start date? Do you what? Do they have a start date? Start date is when these are.
Did you just talk over?
Yes.
They're early start dates when these are signed.
Damn. Hell, we say that again.
Can, can Rhonda use my stamp for that or do I need an original signature for when I get back?
If he approves it, he uses that.
Yes, I'm fine with that if he's meeting those.
Okay, Ryan, those should be the first four. So we'll keep those together. I mean, I have a file signed here, so it's.
Okay. Thank you.
If you can, I can read it, eh?
Yeah, no, I can't read.
Oh, okay.
Someone said a lot.
Yeah, well.
Ron would have a pretty good list of stamps to sign us.
You're giving permission to use your stamp? Okay, I see a thumbs up. So when Ryan's, is there just these four, Ryan?
No, there's one more area.
No more. I've got to keep them separate.
Okay, so I.
There are already, Ron, one's got blue, one's got red, so it's.
So you're not in the, you won't make a motion if I write a fair for?
No, no.
Okay, I'll be right back.
I mean, I've been, yeah.
That.
Dude, I was gonna, I rose the other day with. First one, 2000. Twenty-two, twenty-three season, Rod.
Uh, we held tight. I watched the, um, we did, uh, I did have the guys in early just in case we had something up north. Because it looked like it kinda came in that way. So what we did was, Ron and I started it before that morning. And we started running spots wrong like north. About the only thing we seen was over the turnpike. Out there in the northwest, we had some splash on there, but the sun was gonna be coming out.
So I got about 3:30 up and I was out and I walked on slush on my porch. Well, it wasn't, it's already, it wasn't snowing.
It was playing the song off my.
Really?
Yeah, right. I mean, we can see that with that for the first.
I'm gonna step out of there.
Three, 307th Street, yeah. They've got. Railroad's gonna give some money and K-Dot's gonna give some money for that. Yeah, I met with the township the other day. Okay. And. Should we have Cook and Flat do the design work? Because of that south end where it goes. Where that existing crossarms are, the road's gonna have to make kind of a big exit in there. Yeah, it's gonna be reinvested on, stay on the east side. Well, I know that, but I was wondering if we, if we could have Cook and Flat do the design on that. Very first, first leg that we're gonna do is have, uh, we're gonna have to get it surveyed. Well, right. Township's gonna have to get it surveyed. Because it's actually not our rate. Well. You know, it is. And then I thought maybe they get Devon to do these before. Yeah, and, and I told them, um, they've been reaching out to some other people. They got two people putting in bids. Right now, three key and the other. I didn't.
I assume I attest. I assume I sign me a test. And then it doesn't say county sealed, but, so I assume I don't do that this time.
I, I was.
Would?
Yeah, okay. That way it's all. These are all for the one bridge.
One thirty-four.
Rayland said there was a little wooden box called what you're trying to do. I think he's there, what he was, there's two or three things they kinda wanted to do at once. Yeah, I looked at that. Okay. Is that there or is that out? There's, it's, it's two by five. Okay. Ten square foot. Okay. So, um, I talked with them on some suggestions. I was like, do a half round. Right. Or, as if you want to say, there's, there's not too much that's running off right there. As you can go with a pipe. Because that road is not required here. Yeah. And they're going to kind of make that such, not a sharp angle. So they're gonna bring in some dirt and kind of go up to that approach that, that river check comes right up. Mm-hmm. We're just gonna kind of take a more of a flatter approach.
Which one is that?
It's 317 and, uh.
That one.
More row, yeah. Row. Yeah.
So they get all of their agreements made without, without having to do.
Um, they're gonna have to, it's gonna have to be surveyed out for the new areas so they can figure out how much land is gonna have to be purchased from. Well, that's what I said, we almost have no kind of design of the road. You know, a lot of it's on, on the township. Yeah. Made suggestions with them and stuff. Okay. Out there at that meeting the other day with them. So that will be Friday, tomorrow will be with, um, BNG Consultants on the transfer station. We're going over some of the new areas. They're gonna have a couple guys, new areas where we need to, we're seeing the adventure that we're still following. So, okay. Where we need to be going next, so. You got one cell about full then? Yeah. So.
Got anything else for us today?
No, that covers all of that, so. Good.
Doggone it, we're gonna make a narrative here. Melissa, come on.
Yeah, my name's Patrick.
Right, who are yours?
First, we need to talk about past payments. The other agreement.
Okay, so is this for the long record that's asking for the?
Yes.
Special event application?
Yes.
All right, so I'm gonna go back in time just a little bit. Maybe Pat, I know you were involved with us, but, uh, the agreement was made between the county and Nance Board to extend their existing CUP with a new haul right, they have a 25 cents a pound for everything that come out more than that forward. Is that correct?
Everything, yeah.
And to date, we haven't received any money, so evidently there's not been anything all about that quarter.
You can operate on that for some, check on that.
Uh, well, we all know that that's not correct, so that's why before I would even consider it a special number because we've gone out of the way to help you guys. Before I, before I think that one, so that I want to make sure the other issues were solved on the last.
Send a messenger to play the complete.
Ryan, almost, you said the last check you got for the series was for a hundred and eight dollars and that was for the.
August. And that would have been for the month previous. Certainly, uh, we can make a way to pay it to the extent that the process, we agreed to that previously and if there's.
Yeah, that's good that you agree to that, so. That's good, that's good. Don't agree on those names.
Right, but the problem is, is that. On the morning, maybe sign off on, which I, yeah, what they have us do, but with the intent that there's no deadline on when we get paid our fees. I mean, we usually get our fees every month, but I don't receive any of that of the last agreement, which makes me believe that there's not gonna be fees coming off of that.
One of the things we can do, we sent here over to it, is once we get the county, we can just integrate it into the permit fee, make sure he has the pay upfront for it.
How many tons of product is left out of every one haul?
They just shade over the weight that it turns. It's about, extends a quarter. So what, you got all them out of there? Um, there's a couple of, of small piles, but the bigger piles, millions. That's all, no, you're okay. Yeah.
So you're saying there's 20 below 20,000?
Right.
Seems like I'm walking on a drum on that. What's that come out to?
Yeah, 25 cents a pound type.
No.
So these are easily identifiable piles and we will easily identify when they're gone? Right. Okay.
Yeah, because there's no other, there's no other coming out of there.
Yeah, so it'll be clean up, okay.
So when do the regulations start on?
I bet it started already, it'll be after this. We've got a statutory deadline, eighteen months.
So the only equipment that will be out is a loading order trucks. So what we, the only thing we don't know yet on is that, uh,
we're going to do this.
We're right on the previous one. And you were starting by adding to this, is that what you just said?
Well, one of the things you can do is instead of granting this, I mean, you could say, we'll grant this on a condition that you need that payment as a permit fee.
Well, that's what I was just hearing. That's why I asked how many tons we left out there now. It goes to, we'll not make that, we should all already have that. That doesn't affect what's already on that. That's my question. What month? That doesn't affect what's already on that. That's my question. What number is the program on that because I don't have any.
It does what you're saying is once you find out what that previous number is, that will be in condition to the permit.
Yeah.
Those are the numbers that we can get through the state.
Right. They're working on that as well. But what he's saying is that be part of the permit.
All right, so here's how I would make the motion to approve the special permit. Can you hear me, Heather? Yeah. So I would make the motion that we approve special event application type four or in our hand for LLC with the conditions of there's approximately twenty to twenty-two thousand tons of aggregate to be moved out. So we'll just round that off to fifty-five hundred dollars per road agreement. That be paid in advance and the special event application to.
Which is fifty dollars.
So I would make a motion to approve that with those two cat. So we receive fifty-five, fifty in advance for that special event permit. And the way it's broke down is the fifty-five hundred for the road agreement and the fifty dollars for the special bill. And then also that you guys find out what you saw the county was backdated in the last exception we did. Did you get all that, Heather?
I did, except about the previous few months that we're waiting to hear on the amount called out already.
In there that they will have to go get those numbers and then send a check for that.
Okay.
What route will be used? What route will be used to haul about?
I'm sorry, can I?
So all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All vote same side. Motion carries. If that's acceptable, then.
Yeah, the only thing I can think of is that we're at all in this pile.
Well, yeah.
And do we know that it's twenty-two thousand pounds exactly? What if it's forty thousand pounds? We're really love, what if it's fifteen thousand pounds? We might be good for us to weigh it in.
Right.
Because it will.
I mean, I don't have a problem with that as long, we're gonna take the fifty-five hundred, you tell us the number again. Well, I'm sure that they've been doing this long enough. They're not, they're, they're estimating. They're probably very good estimating. They're like most of us and they're gonna estimate till the end of time.
Well, you got scales on the loader.
Exactly.
Most kind of, one loader guy's gonna get pretty close.
Yes. I didn't talk to the guy that probably that I would rely on first. One, one thing maybe to consider is they pay half of profit. That way we know we're definitely gonna get there and then we'll pay you half on the tail end of it just so we're not overshooting your energy. Or if we're not missing half, we can make it whole.
I don't think we're gonna be close on our machine because then we gotta figure in the other money still. I know that's kind of coming. That's probably what I see what we just talked about there.
Right. I'm gonna get that.
So, I mean, I made the motion, I did, so I don't wanna change it. Ross, you wanna change it?
I'm gonna make sure we're accurate.
I have the random. I ended up two morgues that you keep, but I've got nothing back yet with payment, so can't publish it.
So those are the, they're adherent to the plans, aren't they? Because this is a special event, that's how this gets around the fire.
Correct.
Because if it goes away, does she get it back?
Has to be published in paper. I should prove that something. So the soonest, if I get any of those CUPs back, the deadline for November publishing has passed to meet in December. So I would, I just have to have them back December twenty fourth and then we would not make a decision until January. I maybe have the one, I have eight.
Housing applications, bunches?
Um, seven this last week.
Seven more? So how many since you've been in the office?
I don't know. Probably twenty, I mean, I've been looking additions too. Or like old, you want just housing or like old cars?
Any addition.
I have twenty-five.
And that's your third, huh?
Between add-ons, building, and I'm not talking real estate.
Right. I mean, but any building that goes up becomes a tax.
You buy a storage convention, you gotta have a permit too.
Because as commissioners, when we, when we set our goals, it's been had a good timeout unless in that time, but when we set our vision and what we thought when we came to office, our goal was that we'd like to see two hundred new additions in a year. If we're gonna.
I don't think that's gonna be a problem right now. I mean, the way things are going right now.
I think we're way ahead of that pace and that's what I'm saying. I, I think it's a process that's working well.
I mean, I emailed a guy one this morning that he's just doing an add-on to his house, the garage. That's still an addition, still battery at home. And so I know that as well.
And group of the artists, and one of the things we did with the ten-year tax abatement on new construction was this, is if you're in the county and you need water, you need this, you need that, that abatement will help pay for that. Because the low paying taxes, you get to pay for your water to get there. So everybody wins at some point.
I had a lady call this morning that doesn't have any real access and so she asked me to mail her the permit, which I'm more than happy to. And she also wanted the neighborhood revitalization program mailed to her as well for Atlanta. And so I just sent them together. So it's postage that way. But they're all aware of all of this.
Exactly.
I mean, things are happening.
That's the good one. Heather, do you have anything to add? Any of this one? We can't hear you, but.
Not right now.
She said not right now.
Right.
I can hear you.
Yeah, I could have heard you then. You got a holler for some reason.
Just wanna wait on him to come back. Do you want estimates on the provision of what you said or?
Well, if he's got, if he goes back, if he's got a check with him. Sorry. Anyway, we'll have to add that in or something. Or we'll just put it in as a road agreement. Want to make up a foot right there. Now if he goes there, it's a microphone that says. We got something. Orion, you got one handy that should do this?
Do what?
Uh, I don't have them.
We would just call a prepaid road agreement fee for twenty-two thousand pounds is what we're for twenty-two thousand tons.
Yeah.
We take one of these vows on terms. Only by setting the five hundred.
Oh, I think. It's usually looking at a file, you usually look at the end of it. Well, no, I mean, anybody, you go look at files. It's, they're not nicely colored.
Or when I look at a ton, I look at it.
Oh, I know.
Because they were gonna be fifteen tons of gravel.
Yeah, fifteen tons of gravel in the ground. That's it. Yeah.
Or what you call it, like, I would like four huts, so I could do a driveway, like, that didn't even count.
That did you imagine the concrete, yeah. It's like, uh, that's fifteen, that's hard by the. It's ours, it's a little bit loud now.
I don't have one, let me.
I don't think we need one because we've just put a, a damage to the bill that says it's a prepaid fee for this many tons. I'll be right back.
Yeah, I've had people calling, oh, I only need twelve tons. You know, my whole.
Two years special event for that, correct? Yeah, okay, I'll be outside.
So where's the Rock, Spotten County now for the sound? Are they scattered all over?
I feel like it's everywhere. I mean, there's, I have some that are just finishing up completion down by Malvern right now. Five that I know of.
When you run out.
We just gotta keep on it and keep it going.
One final thing, who would get all this rock out and we're okay? And prepaid road fee twenty bucks a ton. We got some variable weather to deal with in December. We probably have eight months of rains back there. Do we, do we go until we get it out at high speed for February fifteenth?
Yeah. And what we do is in the agreement, that's the fifty-five hundred is the prepaid amount. And then that covers the first twenty-two thousand pounds of residential and they can figure out its last and it's pretty good. And then you'll find out what that other number was on the.
Yep.
And I'll type it on the minimum review agreement in the February fifteenth date. That's a favorite of mine.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give to the county. We'll get you two checks.
We don't want you counting rights that deep, so.
So. If you get us a new one these right now, then we can sign it. We'll check that and we'll be there.
Uh, if we lose email at that time. They know the plan is our sales at the center.
So you know, fees are collected.
The only thing I need to collect to proceed is the fifty dollars.
You want to do what now?
Fifty dollars for the actual permit.
I would plug the fifty-five fifty because I'd plug the fifty-five.
Well, none of that kind of road bridge, not me.
No, they come to the county all the time.
I'm gonna just catch me, I don't invite that out.
So before this becomes a fact, the fifty-five hundred is gonna be ready.
Right.
All right. Appreciate you.
And I'll email you and receive your list too.
Will you burn down the new one of these today that we can sign and get it signed and we accept you and I'll have all the things in there? Thank you. What else? We have Amanda Taylor. She got.
We'll have anything.
So it's still like the amount of tons that water costs.
We should have, when we worked.
Yeah.
I didn't.
Well, that's what he did.
Right.
So we're gonna get fifty-five hundred dollars towards twenty-two thousand tons. Melissa made it sound like the money goes to road duties and that all comes into the county government.
That one, with it being a road, how would that work? It shouldn't go to road and bridge for the CUP portion of running the road.
But when it goes in, I'm saying the money still goes into the general fund of the county.
And we can.
Those road and bridges have separate.
Yeah, river is separate, it's in the account.
Yeah, it goes into, just like that check in that we got in August, that goes into the rock area. For rock and that keep.
So when does, so when we look at our county budget, the road and bridge budget is not on our budget.
The road and bridge is separate. It has its own page, like the health department, the.
But it's still funded through the general.
No, the general fund is by itself on a line. And then you have road and bridge on a line, and then you have health on a line, and you have special living waste disposal on a line, ambulances on a line.
So they're eleven thousand.
Yes, they're eleven thousand.
The sheriff is part of the general.
But you can transfer from the general to road and bridge.
Right.
And vice versa. And I don't care where the money is. What I'm saying is that to make it clean for this permit, the guy needs to have money attached to it. I don't know about who to cut the check here. I don't care if it gets it, we just draw a check and give it to whatever department. So I think it all comes inside the list. I don't care what's road and bridge, that's where I get this, they're in the council, it's still a six year. Yeah. So at the end of that, all belongs to the tax under the county.
But when the check comes in, it can be separated at the.
Yeah.
Absolutely. The big thing is, is when you do a conditional use, you're having an incentive. You need the money with the pen. So you can have it out.
If you can take a check up to the attorney's office and split the forty more tons if you want to.
I get what you're talking about now. I was just. The money that goes to road bridge, it's great because that's what's got a good fix.
And the paint check guy, I never told that. So I got a call in again today for whatever what was talking about.
Oh, we don't, I thought we did that ourselves.
Oh, no. No, we pay.
So we don't have any paint that we could go up there and do just a one more. The city, it does, that's what I thought.
Do they?
Yes.
Yeah, we don't, we are.
Maybe we can contact the city and ask someone to help us out.
No, we, we hired a straight line painting.
Right.
To come in and paint our roads. And so when I turned that in, for the models that we redid on seventy-five highway, then there were some faded marks north of Rockwell Road. And that's what we turned in. I think that was a total cost of about thirteen thousand.
No, it's expensive.
I think we tried to do it ourselves in the past and it was.
No.
If they had a cake going down, would you want them to do it?
What was that?
For serve.
Yeah, they have the capability of doing.
Yeah, I, I think they do that for some reason. I think I said we did it all once.
I see them painting, marking up my stalls out here on seventy-five. It only needs to be for the school area, that's not.
Double line so they don't, nobody can pass it.
You try.
This is safe then.
Yeah. Yeah.
That was a big one, I guess.
Well, we got some, we got some workers with orange suits that could do it.
I'm sure that one will be beautiful. They have what?
Frankland County at first.
Yeah.
One guy that he's ever to fans to buddy, a truck was stolen. And it was just one of the, it was a diesel liquid gasoline.
What are you doing?
The guys that can keep that paint equipment going.
I talked to him. I'm in, I'm wearing a commission with you live, by the way, but so I got your table, so everybody's getting ready to do it for this. I'm getting it. Do you guys have, do you guys have a painting striker for the roads? Do you like to paint your own stripes for the shirt? Working for Red's and all. That's what I'm asking about. Here's my question. Can I get you one down the middle of the school or level lines if people won't pass to the school? We don't have a striker machine. We have to park it out, but you gotta start. Or if we can just borrow a striker machine and have our guys do it.
No, I don't know.
All right, thank you. But, uh, call us later. Man, we're just about ready for Sunday fog. Ooh, I'm gonna get that, see if he's best. Sarah, come up here and help us.
Yeah.
That is Scott calling the city person. If you call him. He may kind of do it.
Okay. Can we pull them on a do it right through that area?
That's what I'm doing. So I do that zone.
I mean, it's really. From seventy-five.
Hey, what else? Up at the school, the zone that they would like. The zone that they would like to see painted off, is it just through where the buses load and that level?
Yeah, it's usually moved, it's gonna be a double yellow.
So like how far up or down?
There you go, just. I was telling that, this worked out. Yeah. Basically, the feature is being passed the record.
So you know, hundred footy twenty from that walkway. You can start right at that intersection and take it. If you did intersection, intersection.
Yeah. That's the basis for the manager, because there were.
Good.
Last Tuesday and Wednesday, we had our website training, the new website. Um, there were, um, five of us that attended, Brett Lewis, I can't even forget, Christine Foster, Matt Booker, and myself. Um, that attended the whole training on admins. So the, because the five of us have been trained, any major changes, we have actually been working together, the five of us, through emails and just kind of making sure we're all in the same court before we made any. Um, big changes or big decisions. Uh, I, I think that the five of us have worked well together, and the five of us are willing to serve as the main admin and then everyone, and then. There's other options for the rest of the users, so admin has access to everything, um, which means that want to change the front, the homepage or absolutely anything. Then there's an owner, the owner can make changes, um, within their department, like anything, want to change anything to their department. Um, then there's a publisher who can make some changes, coverage of images, some forms. Then there's an author, they can make the same changes as the publisher, but an owner or admin has to approve it first. And then the final one is staff, which all staff can have access to, and they can see what's called an internet or a backend, so we can put like the handbook, any updates, and I'll let Stephanie. Um, that's really Stephanie's area, so I will let her get the details about that. So basically, I just kind of wanted to, my recommendation is the five of us serve as admins, maybe department managers serve as owners, and then they can distinguish publisher, author, but. Um, we, we're just waiting to get commissions, um, depending on what kind of terms you guys come up with, I know you guys have been looking at some different policies.
So on the, on the front page.
Mm-hmm.
Who would be able to change anything on the front page?
Only, only admins, and we have not made, we have not done that individually, we have done that as a cloud or group. So one thing we decided, we kind of follow the Atchison County, and where under government, we do list, um, you know, elected offices, but we don't put their, only put their department, they're excited to put. Treasurer under departments, clerk under departments, but they put a little vibe about the clerk, just like the commissioner.
So here would be my, here would be my question now. The only thing I could see what issue about, about Burning Man.
Yeah.
Burning Man that's in place at twelve AM.
That would be on the front.
But he can't do that until he talks to you guys.
No, he's one of the admin, that's why.
So the admin guy can do whatever.
Yes, yes, now, we were talking, we were talking about putting a Burning Man or some sort of emergency or, or we're closed because of snow, we're talking about that.
Or tornado, tornado.
Right, we were talking about like move like, you know, make big decisions like, you know, rearranging what have the structure of the front end is. Any, you know, any design or concept, anything major, we, you know, the five of us are kind of agreeing on, so that way there's no, uh, no one going in and they can like this, any exchange without, you know, for other people agreeing on it, so it can't be that bad.
Right.
Yeah, no, he would have, as an admin, he would have full access to all that, um, and then even as an owner, we could assign the emergency staff, so he could find, um, sheriff or, or, um, whatever. Cause that, the alert center is a little bigger, but they have a codes of top, we can assign other people to the alert center, so if he was gonna be off and he had somebody trusted, we could assign a publisher to do the alert center.
Right, so at the end of the day, who is responsible for the website?
Um, that's up to you, how you would, if you would have made that the five of us in the meeting, or if you weren't to deem, weren't to, that, we're kind of waiting on you.
Well, that, there is a question, how this will you can chime in to what? The way I look at this, we have nothing to do with it.
Yeah.
That you guys, your website, you guys have set it up, the commissioner role, we're doing is approving the bill.
Yeah.
Is that how we want to do it, commissioners have any involvement in the website, that would be my question. From my standpoint, I don't need involvement in the website.
Right.
But I don't know, does that mean I just want to say whatever you guys want to put on or put on there, or do you want to look at it for example?
Yeah, I.
Except on Burning Man, yeah, I don't care about that, but there's, there's metrics that I don't want to change, does the commissioner want any kind of approval process in that? That's the question I have for you.
So. Uh, I've looked through the four example policies that Stephanie had sent out, and it's kind of all over the board on that, so we would need to look, but. I think one of them said that ultimately the commissions are, the commissioners are responsible for the website, however, the recommendations that's been given with setting up this five-person panel admin board, I think is. Uh, really good because they have the specialty in the technology to do it.
She said the five-person admin, overall commissioners are, um, would oversee a little sheet, or would set up the five-person admin.
And I don't know, probably, I just don't, I, I think the commissioners either need to get involved in it, or they need to stay out of it.
Right.
In my opinion, if we're gonna have five people that are in charge of it, commissioners need to stay out of it, unless something comes up where we have to get involved, but other than that. I think it's your guys is, you know, because you're the ones that are putting it out in front of the public. When I say that I'm in any elected office or any other office that's on. If you guys are doing it the way you want it done, I'm good with that, and I don't want to be telling you how to do what it is, so. Unless it's something that you want us involved in, I don't think I want, unless we're trying to help excel on what you guys in your departments, or what you need on, or what you're trying to promote there. So I think in that case, I, I like that, and I'm leaving it with you guys, and letting you guys handle it, as long as there's a group that everybody fits along, you know, everybody's gonna go and get their stuff done.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, all five of us.
If there's a headache there, then that's when we get a call, and somebody comes and says, hey, I can't get to the sun, and I want to do this, and that's why I can't help this, but other than that, I don't, I don't need to see it other than when I pull it up.
I think the reason the five of us volunteered to get on it, because we all have interest in a piece of pie and enough technology, experience, that we feel comfortable. Uh, and that, of course, has experience in Harford County, so, um, you can be most experienced of all of us.
Are you good with that, Max and Heather? You good with that?
Yes.
Yes, we just, we have to create the policy that kind of oversees this, but yes, I think the five admin board is good.
What'd she say?
She said, yeah, she still, we can create a final policy, but, um, the, the.
So we're gonna go live on the seventh of six, we don't have a lot to make.
Yeah. With, um, and, and let something jump.
And I'm gonna make a policy on something that I know nothing about. So I would say the five people that are in charge of this, they need to come up with a policy that they bring to the commissioners, if the commissioners approve.
We already have some brass policy.
I know, or that's what I would say, is that you five figure out, if you'd like to have a policy and bring it back next Monday, on the twenty-eighth. We can get this done, if that gives you enough time, I know we got a holiday, that's why we're gonna do it next week, we'll push it around against the. You good with that, Heather?
Yes, so those four examples that Stephanie sent out, the four examples, there's a large variety of options in that to pull from.
And if you would like to be involved in that, reach out to them and.
Yeah.
No, we just got a policy, we're on, we'll be down.
That's the one I have.
That was easy enough.
Oh, yeah, I tried.
Um, we have, we have a forum head meeting at eleven, that could probably be moved up a little bit if you guys want to.
We have to call everybody.
Uh, we got a lot up here, we got Tammy needs out, some of the birds, and we're gonna go after that. You wanna go, I said we're gonna. Say that.
That's my question, if you wouldn't mind.
Stephanie, stick around.
Stephanie, please.
Ten? Ten? So I would like to motion, we need an executive session, uh. Stephanie, we got Hammerfeger, from also ten. Chapter twenty-two, September. Uh, for discussion of non-licenced personnel. First to be there. Sheets, somebody's messing with me. They're gonna confuse me. He used to have my ladder. I beg most of our executives, I send them. Uh, following steps in Kansas, every's that meetings and actions are not like the personal matter, exceptions to discuss personal matters related to non-licenced personnel. Protect the profit, the rights and privacy of individuals and law, except if we're at present, and the federal president. Uh, from ten thirteen to ten twenty-three AM, with the ability to call the commissioner, appear at meeting.
Second.
All those are very, so I.
Hi.
I.
Hi.
Yours, call you, Heather?
Okay, I'm not gonna play the rain sound for a few minutes because I have to run upstairs, well, I guess I can leave my. I can leave my phone, I'm gonna leave. Somebody will call me, I'm just gonna leave it.
I think they called and told their girls what type of meeting it was, because I just called upstairs and said, call everybody, and didn't tell them who all was here. Better to do too much than not enough, I suppose.
Right.
I'm sure they called the embrace, it was awful stupid, I just said, call.
They did, they called.
I'm sorry, no, that's why I, I was trying to type the motion and.
What minute?
I just figured you'd be all the time you said this part, I had to move with the tail, so. Maybe I did the.
No, you didn't, you pulled up, I double checked.
You know, I, yeah.
So it was all on there. I've been ready to get this morning. Thank goodness, it's just a three day week, right?
Yes, and I'm leaving early, so.
I got some stuff I'd really like to give out. She's not the person that says that either. She goes.
Okay, I would like to hire Rebecca Gabbard, and I don't know if that's how you can.
I would make a motion. Is this the right thing?
Pretty sure that's what it is.
I feel I would have to go pull it out. I don't know if anybody's ready to say.
Pretty sure that's what it is.
Pretty sure it is. Okay. I don't like her.
Yeah. But who had that was also. Marshall had been here.
We got reports on those because you guys are. So.
That's what they should have.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
In other words, if somebody leaves, it's been over twenty years.
What was Marshall Moncrief's power?
Yes, I mean, what she would be doing is now what she left. Oh, okay, what was she maybe when she was full time?
Ma'am, how's everything going at your office?
Good.
Your fireworks haven't started yet?
No, not yet.
Want to do this?
Probably in December.
Sixteen. And how long has she been there? Four, one, and twenty-two, so start at two with sixteen now. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
I'll make the motion for the driver, the mechanic driver. General transportation and dispatching driver. Thank you, one, twenty, twenty-two, with sixteen.
Second.
All those affairs are high.
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 All those same. You all right, my safety? Anybody? Did we get a hold of?
The girls called everybody, apparently even who was already here, excited.
That's obvious. Where you going? Thanks, dear. It's not home or? Yes. So do you still have family in that hospital?
I think.
Every time one.
We're going. We go to when you sign on Christmas, so I sign, and that's for Thanksgiving, then Christmas is next month. The kids just come back or down there. He's gonna have a triple bypass. So it's like, I better go there and see you, have a nice visit with this before he goes.
Yeah, my vision is. My vision is a very good for a distance. Hey, I have to wear glasses for a distance, so. Oh, now I see. When do you get? Do you buy tickets for the nosebleed section? Or do you always know?
Did you see what Taylor Swift concert tickets were going for?
Uh, yes.
Started at six hundred and twenty, two hundred. And if you got down on the stage.
I know without them, but you can't see it.
No way.
I can watch them on YouTube.
Rhonda.
Yes, yeah.
When people are coming in, if they could move forward, and then whoever speaks, if they'll come up and stand by, because it really is very hard to hear.
If everybody will move forward so Heather can see you, and when they speak, she wants them to step forward, correct?
Yes, it is. It's still very hard to hear.
Okay, she said it's hard to hear.
That's what happens when you guys sit back and then nobody is there to see you. Whoa, listen.
Christine, there's Christine, Stephanie. Amanda and. And Lucy, there's Amanda. See, I have to say their names. And the man. That would really be scary.
There's Stephanie. Oh, we got anybody from the judge's office?
I don't know if they were looking.
There's Melissa.
Missy, you got one of the.
The camera's out.
I can see you all.
Well, there is. If they don't have four, you might say they're well. If they're not, if they're available, they don't have four. I think this is rather than. Dax's office.
I don't know.
I was with Kelsey. Oh. Yeah.
He's not here.
Come on.
How close would you want me to be?
Ah, well, hello, everybody. How's everyone doing today? So as we talk today, Heather, you can see her is online. She would like for people to come up closer because she can hear you on these microphones when you talk. So first, I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and enjoy your. Morning, and we're gonna have this new rule. We close Thursday and Friday, so enjoy that. Also, on behalf of the commissioners, I want to thank all of you for the work that you do for the county, and that's on behalf of the people of the county also. So sometimes it's a thankless job. Sometimes you don't get credit when you should. Sometimes you get credit for things that you didn't do, so. Sometimes that's good and bad. But that goes with it. So on behalf of us, I want to thank each and every one of you. So that will start into the entry of the meeting here, so we'll just sound a little better, but we'll start with a helpful one.
Okay, so we are wrapping up our community health needs assessment, the write-up for that. And that should be ready to go by January first, so I'll get. And then I'll be able to release it for public view around January first. I have been working with Sherwell and Dr. Ricks to appoint a deputy corner. So I think we've kind of got that completely taken care of. I would have a follow-up on that today, make sure that Dr. Rick will go off his page to October third. And I have just recently become a part of the Northeast Kansas Regional Trauma Committee, Firearm Safety Subcommittee. And I'm working to be part of the suicide prevention and regional trauma planning committees. So that will put us, I guess, involved with the state trauma coordination items. I've been working with Tara Gifford from Crossman. I think she's been in here a couple banks and kind of talking with you guys. We have formed a mental health team. That's what I'm gonna kind of report to you for right now. We don't have an official title for the group yet, but we're working on that. And it's part of the stepping up program that she has started. There's her participants from around the county. I think we have the shared department, the police departments, and maybe from the new. So kind of learning where everyone belongs. So it's a project that we will be monthly with. And we will ask for participants from other parts of the county as well. So we may come to the commissioners and ask for someone to meet, you know, once a month with us to kind of see what we do, what we're working on. And we may ask like healthcare providers, like the physicians from Osage or Carbondale or Retractitioners. They might be part of that as well. And I have been receiving a lot of questions around R S V. The case counts higher this year than have been in the past, which, to be honest, I'd rather deal with R S V than COVID. I've had a lot of people asking if we can test for that. We cannot yet. I'm looking at seeing if we can, because our machine that we use for COVID testing can test for R S V, including the A and B and trip. So if the state approves us to do those tests and our medical director approves us to do those tests, then we'll have some initial training that we do to ensure that we're specific correctly and accurately. But as soon as we have the applies, if they approve us, then we'll be, I'll bring it to you guys, let you guys know, and then we'll put it out on social media that we can do that testing. And then I actually just found out about ten minutes ago that one of the schools in the county is posting an extra date early because they have a high number of absenteeism due to illness. So as of right now, I don't know where case counts are for R S V in the county. I know COVID is in the thirties, which is a low number, and I'm happy for us to stay there. But I met with the state Wednesday, and R S V E R bits accounts are higher than COVID E R counts. So R S V is a little bit worse this year than the years past. We just tell everyone, if you feel sick, stay home, drink water and rest. Not much for me, but that's why I'm here.
Thank you. We're not calling you.
Real apologize. She's meeting with officer, some officers.
That's why.
Be here. I'm not prepared to speak.
We won't put you in that. Except take notes. But on behalf of those who've gathered, welcome Tanya McNairy. This is not her. Tanya McNairy was elected at the Republican Central Committee meeting. And she will be our county attorney starting January third, two thousand twenty-three. She wins out of her cycle with same results.
Yes, so.
So it's been twenty-four.
Ninth, twenty-four?
Twenty-five is a point five.
About five, did you write anything for?
I don't see right. I'm almost twenty-five. Tammy Fager.
Well, I don't have as much as the health department, but I got a twenty-twenty-four. Get out an F T A grant done, so I'm pretty excited about that. On transportation side. Her name's, oh, Tara Riddle, the top just so much from Coffee County, has submitted her resignation. She appointed me the new magistrate judge for coffee and nose stains and I don't know what one or whatever. So we're all depending on that that's in the C T V that she was involved in. The senior center, we got through Christmas on market. We have had several memorial with senior center. And it's pretty much booked for the next two months. So it's been going along with the same. That's pretty much all we have for you.
Linda Massey, how are you?
We're still pretty busy in my office, and we've just gotten new computers and trying to work out things in it. Personal life. Still got a lot of stressors going on, and I'm getting mess here. I have to take Joe to offer appointments and rehab. I'm gonna have to have a surgery on my hand. I've got a lump in my hand that they're gonna remove. I've got, well, two grandsons. I'm having some problems, so just bear with me. I am here. My girls are real good keeping up on everything. So just bear with us.
See if Tanya wants to come back now. I seen her speaking. Russell Price, how are you?
Hi, Heather, can you hear everybody okay? Yeah. I just have several permits that have been processed. We're on the road agreement from this morning. I talked to Russ last week in the amendment on the alternative energy. It should be done at the end of this month. So hopefully by the end of the speaker, maybe first part of next week. I have eight additional youth permits out there. None of them are charged or paid for, so probably won't handle any of those until January.
The other one that we did this morning, you got it ready for us to sign?
No, I didn't. I've had people in my office with it, but I will get it submitted by you later.
Yep. Calling now, it is Tanya McNairy. This is our new county attorney effect of January third, two thousand twenty-three. So your first department meeting, if you'd like to switch, you're welcome to.
I don't really have anything at this time, other than Doc and I are working to transition over the office in preparation for me now hitting ground running in January. But if there's anything specific, the council and the administration are willing to acquire, but I don't.
Thank you. Kelsey Lunsby.
I don't have a whole lot. We, she kind of touched on it. We are, we hired a new magistrate. They will not come to my county a whole lot unless we have conflicts or something like that, but her name is Tara Riddle. She was previously a deputy clerk and then occurred for the district court for, I think, sixteen years, maybe around that number. And then she left, and she's been with general transportation in Coffee County for ten years. So we're happy to have her back. That's the welcome back, please do. We're happy, but her swearing in ceremony is December ninth down in Coffee County, because that is where she's based out of. That is where her residency requirement is. She will primarily serve in Coffee and Anderson, and then by extension, she'll come to Osage and Franklin if we have conflict or something like that. We, I don't have a lot of information otherwise. I did bring, I think it's time to bring a few statistics and facts. Maybe just ways to go that side of things. These are our case numbers thus far this year, and I always like to compare them to the county. They're the closest in size to our county here in Osage. So so far this year, the civil world, we filed one thousand one hundred and forty-four cases, and that is seventy-eight more than Franklin County. With criminal traffic and juvenile offender world, we filed one thousand two hundred and fifty-nine cases, and that is a hundred and seventy-nine more than Franklin County. Which I always find interesting because they have four county attorneys that have to consider there, so we are.
So is all the criminals in those six.
We share a good county thirty-four. So then we have filed two hundred and seven adoption domestic child and needed care cases, which is a hundred and twenty-two behind Franklin County. But in the city world, which is handled by county attorney's office, we are actually. And as a whole, we have filed a hundred and twenty-seven cases more than across the board. Franklin County, so I find that interesting, you know, population. Franklin County, so I, I find that interesting that, you know, population wise or smaller, staffing wise or smaller. We're taking, uh, hold on our own against numbers, but we have a few jury trials coming up. Toni's got one that she's going to, I'm sure the attorney general will.
All right, thank you. Good to know that we have lots of criminals in those six.
Okay, well, they probably have known the short end earlier.
Yeah.
It's accountability.
Thanks, Sher. Get some more of them. Yeah. Send them, can we send them to the park? Maybe more. Stephanie.
Well, I'm working with Amanda on the new website and, um, there will be a capability for intranet. So our employees will have access to, um, now go online and see, get any information, maybe on their benefits or or job applications or anything like that. We also have my job online, um, job application so that they don't have to come to the courthouse. They can actually fill out the application online. Um, in December, Ron and I are going to have training so that we can now meet with the employees and initiate the C I C and Court Report and the Time Talk Plus. Um, and Ron and I are, uh, meeting hopefully soon to discuss the courthouse and the hall for a, uh, December event, the event in November, the soup off with the big big stuff. We had, uh, eight contestants and three winners. And our, and we want to thank all the judges who participated in our soup judging. I have, um, we've got almost all of our positions built. We have a position in the attorney's office and, um, we have a post team for the general public transportation. And that's what we have right now as far as job.
Thank you. Ryan Tom.
Uh, right now we got, uh, three bridges that we have on contract that we have set up to begin, um, once the contracts are signed, wildcat construction. We've got two of the bridges. We did those contracts this morning. There's, I have another plan that came in that adds a fourth one, but that is in the early stages. So I'm thinking with the other one that they started last year, we should have five bridge projects going on this year.
First one. You're always hiding in the back, aren't you?
I thought this was going to go, uh, the conference. These are actual old jail, I didn't make it from the old jail. We'll probably post them on our Facebook page. I thought they were going to meet.
I think we're posting these on our website. That is fine.
Yeah.
The song of re-submission jail mode.
One of them from eighteen ninety, one of them from eighteen eighty-seven.
So we're down three normal whiskey.
Thank you for both the provision. One inches, uh, that's one of the names.
I won't mention the names and say some of these people are relatives. So I love them. One, I'm sorry, thirteen eighty-seven, the free press and I was saying, so I guess the good ones in her name is because they put them on her. Eddie Duffy. And then that was the song of re-submission jail mode by John Gibson tuned to the Boston travel. So anybody who's around eighteen ninety, they knows how that song is.
I thought it was pretty interesting. Yeah. Uh, we have the set programs and the K I P ran it this week, so we'll have a lot of protection for, uh, on it by K I P. So I'll do, we have some other.
On holidays?
Yeah, Thanksgiving.
So remember, everybody, when you grab it on holidays, they charge, they charge extra money for fines on holiday weekends, sounds like that.
I think it's extra.
I was saying that was double fire. Was it double fire on holidays or not?
Really? That's the only.
Only construction, yeah.
Construction.
Those will be out in the horse.
If you see a white truck coming after you, it's no quicker than you would think. A little bit sick.
We can bring my turkey in.
Something that is interesting that would probably will, you know, everybody talks like it's always that, oh, they have to meet their quota. Very, very, very little of that money from traffic ticket, ticket comes back to the county. The whole of that goes to the state.
Mm-hmm. So their quota is set by Governor Cohen. Yeah.
There's an interior.
You know, the joke comes from the overall, they had to meet their quota, but they didn't.
Yeah, we don't have those more than we gain.
No, but they take the best.
I've been to the office and I can tell you, I don't see anything on the board that shows sales numbers or checking numbers, so.
The other thing, I don't know if it's mixed or not, we're getting a prepared.
A little bit, yeah. I didn't, I just got a touch on it.
Okay, we're trying to get a deputy quarter. I think that's going to be approved, which is very important to us to have a second contact, so.
I'm going to follow up on that thing.
No, we got, the new truck came out.
Yeah, the new four came in.
It's very nice.
I'm surprised that a V six would run like that, but it's a twenty-two V six and it, uh.
It's their pursuit model, that's it.
Yeah, alright. I used to have a car that I would try to out, but I don't.
I won't say when the top speed is. I know where it's.
Fast enough. Thank you. Ron, we'll save you last this time you have.
No, I don't have time to name.
Well, that was quick. Uh, Matt Cooper.
Okay. Yes, man, I'm saving you for last because I figured you got a sheet. So, uh, we've pretty much wrapped up our seventeen percent. In fact, we have wrapped up our seventeen percent inspections of the county. Um, so if you see us out, we'll either be doing our ongoing sale review of properties that were sold or, uh, through the first of the year, we will be doing, um, permit inspections. Anything that's had a permit on it that we need to go out and assign and present complete before we set values starting the first year. That's what Phil Statton's out doing now. Um, I can report that our maps, we do have a working copy in our office now. Um, it's not been updated online. We're waiting for nine-one-one advocacy layer to be added and then we will update, um, the online partial search maps with the new maps. Um, but with that, getting the working copy in the office, we've been able to start working our act review mailers where they, we send out mailers. They tell us that they've had a language change, send them back to us, and then we map that on the maps and make changes that are right for tax purposes. Um, we sent out five hundred and fifty-six of those, five thousand five hundred and fifty-six of those act mailers this year. And we got over three thousand back. So we got a pretty good response back, a little bit of a fifty percent. Uh, we'll be working those up, getting the map or receiving the baggage reports back, getting them entered into the system. Uh, I wrapped up, I'm wrapping up market modeling, hope to have it done by Thanksgiving. Um, that will allow me to complete my index study by December first. Once I get that done, we will be ready to start setting values on properties, um, mid-December. Hopefully that will allow us to get all the residential values set, leaving the ag for after January one. Um, but that will allow us in the office to focus in January and February on appeals and have other stuff we're kind of doing, we're getting a influx of appeals here. Um, so we are right on target, if not a little bit ahead of getting values out on time. I think we'll have to play getting values out like we did last year. So everybody should expect to get the values out on market. Okay.
So what's your quota?
What's my quota? Market value, that's my quota.
Uh, I had, what have you seen through, uh, last year we had a sizable jump. What's it looking like?
Um, so I, I, our way through the index study, for most of the neighborhoods, it's not showing, um, and that's sales to our prior value. That's why you face that up. Um, so we're, some neighborhoods are maybe two percent dequited, actually. Uh, which would say we're two percent over on our values on the sales proceeding in those neighborhoods. Um, and then a few of the neighborhoods are two to five percent, still low on values from where the sales are. I do have a couple, I think there are late neighborhoods that are about ten percent. So, um, I think we've hit the, maybe the, for an overall county, I think we've hit the major jumps in value. Um, I think that interest rate is starting to hold some prices down on sales. So that's been news, I guess. Same values jump up the last few years, but bigger than stabilizing a little bit, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Christine Foster.
Um, update on tax statements because people are coming in trying to pay their taxes already. Um, we're calling in. Uh, we got the file from Rhonda on Friday. And it has gone to the printer. Um, and they're estimating that the statement should be in the mail by October, if not sooner.
November, November.
November, yeah.
What do they do?
December twenty.
Twenty. My birthday. That's not all right, thank you.
And we complain about that day. And I'll post on Facebook and on our website, um, when those actually get mailed, but that's their ETA for right now. Um, we're working on the target house, so we need to get to Rhonda by the first. Um, we're on the website. Big project. Um, really excited about it though, I have the team involved, you know, trying to put a bunch of F A Qs and things like that for people so that, um, that hopefully they will be able to use the resources. The state has a lot of resources for motor vehicle and driver's licenses that I think people just aren't aware of. Like you can renew online your driver's license, you can change your address. And so just trying to get all of that information out.
Do you renew your driver's license online?
As long as you're not over sixty-five. Don't ask me why, we don't know, that's just the number they picked.
If you have to give me the ID.
I'll say, how do you get around that?
How do you round that?
Yeah, I examine my.
There were so many renewals you have to go in to do your ID. And then you just brief, sorry. I, they just reuse the picture you found me.
That's great. Can I, but can I change weight?
I think it all stays.
Can I lie to myself and get hurt? I have a license one time, so I don't wait to go on the panel. Or we got a look better, goes, which slide? That was kind of cool.
Um, and then, uh, file over, we filed two hundred and eighty-six cases for related personal property for twenty-one with the courts. Um, and in researching, um, the legal personal property tax, um, if you don't pay it, we're supposed to put a stop on your motor vehicle record. Well, that hasn't been the case every year. Um, so I'm working on, um, I think I'll see if, you know. But I'm going to be presenting something to the commissioners, um, in regards to statutes. Um, I guess we have to revise cases every five years to keep them active. I don't know if that's been happening. Um, and then there is a, um, uh, option for the commissioners to, um, work through, um, anything over twenty years old, which we have stuff back to ninety-six.
Yeah, personal property acts or?
Personal property. And anything, um, that remains dormant under fifty dollars, there's options for me to present that to the board too.
So that's not real estate, that's.
So we're fifty thousand, and then I'm working on the other real estate tax items, um, as we prepare to have, um, potential lender for on the fifth.
The fifth, that's the. December fifth is the day.
And that's the.
Amanda Coleman, wherever you are.
Hello. Um, so we are up to twenty-five neighborhood revitalization program applications. So thanks to, yeah, so I'll look over those after I receive them. I get a little bit of the night for some of them. And we have, uh, yes, do work. So the next couple of weeks, uh, website revitalization is going to take up the majority of my time for everything that you want on the list. If there's anyone that is not an admin or is an admin, uh, that has not got with me, that wants to make change or just wants to learn, that has a staff that wants to learn, let's schedule a time. I would love to have as many updates as possible done by this day. Um, Brendan, I know we're busy and you might not be able to have your training done by this day, but I will try to get, I'm going to try to get as much done as possible before it launches. So please let me know if you have changes, if you have core, it's already on your site. Those are automatically turning those, whether you ask for it or not, they're automatically going to become billable or they get just a minute. Um, so there's some changes that, um, you might not ask for that I will do anyway. But, uh, as far as anything you want to add to your website, um, please get with me and we will schedule a time and we will make it happen. So, uh, that's most of what I had. And then a lot of what I turned in last month is still ongoing. It's not done, so I just didn't want to repeat things that were repeated last month, but so we write down that sheet.
Thank you. Heather.
Just a couple small things. Can you hear me?
Little bit.
Sorry.
Might have to get closer to the mic.
Um, I'm about as close as I can get. Is that any better?
Can you turn up the voice?
The water's upside of this.
Just two quick things. Just anyone who's helped on the website in any capacity, I wanted to say thank you. I'm very excited about the new rollout and how I think it's going to be, we're trying to make it as user friendly as possible. So anyone that's helped with that, I'm very thankful. The second thing is, is that I am putting together kind of my thoughts and ideas and goals for two thousand twenty-three. And I've been asking kind of the public input on things they might like to see us possibly discuss. So I was also going to say that to department heads and employees of any topics that you think you'd like to maybe see the commission possibly discuss. If you would like to visit with me about that, you can email me or call me. And I'm just kind of compiling a large list of what we might look at discussing next year. That's all.
She said that, um, she said that she's working on a list of goals for two thousand twenty-three. Does anybody have anything they want to add? She's asking for public input as well as employee and department heads. She thinks everyone could have helped on the, um, website. Does she say anything?
Okay, that's it. Good job.
You know, we need to get some other speakers where you're.
Yeah, I'll later find out or some of that might be the.
That's the first time I think we've had anybody zoom.
No, we've had none.
It is?
Yeah, just recently we have that one gentleman.
Oh, you guys are always going to be.
Yeah.
So on that website, I guess the main thing is remember the website is yours, as it's. And we're going to, I mean, the commissioners will pay the bill a lot, but it, the website belongs to you and the public. And it's your way to connect the two together. So utilize that however you like and we'll get out of your way and not cause you any issues unless you make us get involved. I'd like the commissioners to stand out with your website, so to make sure it's used for your purposes.
Well, I made it through November seventeenth without hitting a deer or deer hitting me, which is by far the worst day of the year for, for tar deer accidents.
November's not a day.
November seventeen.
Right, I didn't know that. I might have been sleeping on a shoulder.
Highway patrol has stayed on that and it really spikes on that one day, but it's still high. You're, you're still several hundred deer.
When you leave in January, you pretty sent me all this information, so I had a good study. I don't remember if I have a taste, I don't really move my head.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, other guy, go maybe E C N and some of the other organization, Chamber of Business, whatever. They're going pretty well on the phone.
All right, well, I don't have a hold on that. I would like to say thanks again for so that you guys do. Uh, enjoy your holiday weekend, you got a four-day weekend, enjoy it. I would tell you all to just forget the county for four days and take the reaper. Sometimes people need to reset. I know I could use it right now, so I would suggest that everybody takes a reset and get ready for the following week. Everything will be fine. Other than that, happy holidays and eat lots of turkey and take long laps.
Thank you.
Thank you all again, have a great day. Oh, we do have a, we have a part this later in the week.
Yeah.
I love it.
Can you turn your head now?
I haven't turned it. I still question something about it.
That's probably just how your house works right now. Okay. Oh, it's kind of.
Okay, just I think you're going one time. Yeah, I'll check it.
This week I know we're.
So. And then Melissa, when she gets the special. You can ask the other commissioner, we'll do the approval. I'll make a motion when we do this, so we get that sound. I'll make a motion when the special men have a patient, like there's a murder ready, and Melissa will send it in terms of. That will be your law, and then we use our staff to stamp that, so we can get that structure.
Right. Second.
All those are there tonight?
Aye.
Aye. Everybody have photos at night? Most of the characters.
Did you hear that, Heather? Okay, sorry. Let me check mine.
Do you have anything else? Do you have anything else? Heather, you have anything else?
I moved to the journey.
Awesome. All those are there tonight?
Aye.
Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.